Um, call this meeting of the A S D governance committee meeting to order at eleven o'clock on April fourth, twenty twenty four. Um, and all of them for member chair.
Dave Donnelly, board member.
Friend Josephson, chief academy officer.
Ari Lang, chief human resources officer.
Andy Rattler, chief financial officer.
Katie Grant, executive assistant.
Erica Sullivan, executive assistant.
We left in four number.
And you're right, this is Brandon.
And what happened in one on one?
Uh, we have. Uh, my, my.
Okay.
No, Margot's traveling. She's gonna try a lot when she can.
Um, so yeah, starting with number one on the. Item plus had a chance to look at this, just the routine review of our board policy section. Twelve forty, twelve fifty, twelve sixty, thirteen, eleven, twelve. Subsidiary, uh, things, um. The, the one thing I noticed during reviewing, most of this is about the complaint process, um, and it occurred to me that. The, the board is not necessarily informed about the resolution of complaints. Um, but I also kind of understand why a lot of times that can't happen. It's a personnel issue, um, or, or, um. There are other things, but it, it occurred to me that the board is oversight, that he probably should have some idea. Of how many complaints are coming in and how they resolve, um. I think we probably don't usually know unless somebody's unhappy enough to raise a stick about it later. Um, I did notice in the one about library was that if somebody's unhappy with the outcome. They can request that they put on the agenda for board meeting. That. Make things longer, but I didn't actually draft any amendments, but, um, do anyone else have comments or? Thoughts about those board policies? That's fine.
Um, I would just put forward that we are engaging with a group that's doing a complaint investigation audit. Part of the scope of that work is to look at the set of policies that the district has. And to sort of assess whether or not they adequately cover kind of all aspects, start to finish that complaint process. And part of the scope of the work for the audit also is going to be a report out to the board. On the findings from that, including, you know, that review of policies, so. Um, that's gonna happen, I think, before the end of the school year in May, as scheduled. So just a reminder that you'll be getting, I think, some good feedback through that process on, on some of those questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Saying none, um, item number two is administrative regulations on grades and evaluations to your achievement. To, I just forgot you said.
So I know the board has gotten some emails in regards to looking at weighted grades for college level courses. And we've gone through a committee process and updated this A R to include, starting with the second sentence of this. Under weighted grades, beginning with the freshman cohort, to start our high school in the fall of twenty twenty four, and because this has also weighted grades for one hundred level. And above college coursework excluding physical education courses, college courses. So we, uh, we see a need for, but we also know that students have been making. We're starting it with that freshman group because we know that students have been making decisions all along. So what courses they take, because it is competitive with G P As, as they get further along in their careers. And if we started at that, with that grade group, it's an equitable, um, rollout for the, for those.
So this language here is what you're proposing?
It's, it's in A R format, not board policy format. We don't have a board policy on weighted grades, it's all under A R.
Okay.
But we've listened to the, the students primarily, um, have a request for this, so we. Together group and they've been meeting throughout the year and this is what it seems like.
Um, questions?
I have a, thank you for doing this, you know, having been in the S I B meetings, they are. Eager to see something like this transpire, so I think it's really responsive to students and family interest. Um, I think that seeing this moving laterally, even if we've talked about the portrait of a graduate. That's, you know, been, been something that a lot of people have worked on. Maybe this is a separate question, but it seems related, like, how does grade, how does the grading system A through F? Align with sort of the portrait of a graduate values, and maybe that's really not a conversation for, for this moment in time. Um. But it's something that came up in.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you.
And I think you have the portrait, you sort of put it together.
You know, you know, I, it isn't really part of this, however, there's been discussions, um, on tax teams, um, around. Grading and dual credit, and then what is adding this extra piece into the? Thing it isn't necessarily all A P or I V kids now that can actually get weighted grades. Cause with advanced coursework in their areas, so I think that that helps with the overall. As we move into the academies to allow more kids the opportunity to receive the higher level, level credit through their dual credit.
So this, this expands the opportunities for more students to leverage, um. Available spaces.
Right, this is a very small piece of it, we're talking dual credit, it's a lot bigger part of it. A lot of kids to get that college credit before they go, going into colleges, a bigger plus for it, but.
Uh, well, thanks, I think that's certainly a stab at.
Of course.
Um, the last time this was before the board for consideration, the administration raised all kinds of concerns about it. How it was gonna be very difficult to have the college transcripts of a different grade than the high school transcripts. What's changed since then?
Well, what do you mean? Can you give me?
This, this came before us about six years ago. And, um, then the administration said they didn't see a way to be able to do it. Because of the conflict between. Record on the college transcript and the high school transcript.
Well, we, well, since then, we also have the last, the middle college, you know, we have a better. Communication and relationship with the university, especially our two universities here. I couldn't tell you what happened with former administrations, but. There's a lot of things that we have done in the past that have walls that didn't allow us to do things, but now we've kind of opened up some of those opportunities, I think.
And I don't know. Some of those conversations when we first opened up the middle college, and I think the, the thinking at the time. Was that there's already some advantages when you take a college class because you get a full year's worth of credit. On your high school transfer course semester's worth of work and, um, and we're fully paying for that credit too. And that this would be an extra added advantage, and we didn't know sort of how the playing field was gonna sort out with these kids who were. Moving to middle college and how that was gonna impact scholarship, competitions, valedictorian races, and sort of all the things that get rolled in. I do grades, and so that at the time, I think that was the position that was staked out. But fast forwarding, we've had more input from students, more input from families. And more requests to consider, you know, college grades under that weighted scheme, just like we do A P. And so I think that's through this conversation, the, the conversation's just tipped the other way.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Um, as a reminder, we don't actually vote on administrative regulations, um. They make a subset of it, makes a policy. Moving to item three, A R one, 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 four, social media guidelines. I assume this is Mr. Lang, I assume. Some of this model of my behavior, it was a pleasure.
Uh, we have a variety of, um. Guidelines over the years around social media usage, of course, social media is something that's ever evolving, so every once in a while we go back and kind of look into language and try to update it to. Uh, both the landscape that exists, you know, at the current time, and case law has been changing, you know, pretty significantly around this topic over time as well. And so these social media guidelines were last, um, published in the script for employees in two thousand nineteen. So this is an, an attempt to do two things really, to kind of refresh the language where appropriate. And also elevate them from what's looked at a handbook previously. Uh, which was searchable in support central to something that is actually an administrative regulation, and so it's a little bit easier to search for and find. Along with board policies, um, so most of this is language that's been brought forward from the previous iteration. Um, we updated the links, so there's connections here under the district guidelines to other. Policies and handbooks that may be related to this topic, and then the bullet points at the bottom are really the. Um, I think the salient piece of this, they just are a reminder to staff that. Um, well, we certainly aren't trying to control people's thought or speech or go out and monitor their social media usage. At the point at which it becomes disruptive to the educational environment, it can and sometimes does have an impact on. You know, their employment with the district, and so just reminding them that they need to be, um. Professional and smart in the way that they conduct themselves in all aspects of their life, so that it doesn't impact their employment. Um, is really kind of the intent here, um, these have been reviewed, uh, by J D O. Um, so from a legal perspective, to make sure that they align kind of with what most organizations are doing and, and kind of the current statutes and, um, case law that's out there. We did have Sarah Josephson from J D O yesterday at G P L, or at G N O. And she presented to all of our principals on some of these topics, just to kind of update them on where things are at in statutes, so they might help guide employees as well. But just wanted to bring this forward to the governance committee for any input from the board, um. So that we can elevate them as any.
Anyone for questions, comments? Mr. Reese?
I, I appreciate this, cause yeah, it's an issue out there for sure. Uh, I wish it was something we could also do regarding parents and how they. I, I'm wondering also if, I think we had talked about it recently, also updating our own internal. Uh, boundaries between how we communicate with our students, and I was wondering if, if that's also something we looked at more recently, because. I'll just say during the pandemic, we've really crossed that line. Uh, we were zooming into people's homes, texting, and I think it's been hard to come back from that in many contexts, and so that's also a concern of mine, is that. We have, I think, a lot of educators still texting on their personal machine, you know, devices, and so.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would, I would say two things that went in front, we did, um, create a new. Crossing the line guidelines for appropriate adult student hours mandatory training this year that all employees had to go through as part of that series. And it did really touch on, again, that piece that you need to use appropriate channels of communication that are established and archival and searchable, so that's. You know, district email and applications that are district supported, like remind app for coaches and, and not their sort of own personal, you know, informal texting. And then it's also one of the points here, so we don't have anything unique specifically to that topic, but it is sprinkled in a lot of these different. Um, reminders, guides, handbooks, mandatory training, so it's down.
Oh, oh, throw it out that, um, when I was in the classroom, I made use of Google dot net and their email system, um. We issued a, an email account to every student, that was the only email they were allowed to use at school. They were allowed to use it informally, but they just wanted to communicate with friends. But I, I thought it was a great teaching opportunity to, to explain it like this. This is your persona at school, it all has to be school appropriate. Um, same as you were in the hallway or in the classroom or, um, in a meeting, and. Provided an official way for staff to communicate students about anything that was completely monitored. And, and that's, I think, the big concern, um, even with some of the apps and everything, the oversight A S D isn't there. And they had, um, added a system, and, and this is quite a while ago, but they'd add a system where students could put in their phone numbers. Staff could put in their phone numbers, neither could see the numbers of each other, but you actually texted through the system. Uh, without ever having or knowing their phone number, and of course, it's all recorded, it all had oversight, um. And it was subject to a, uh, I'm gonna say an early version of an A I filter that saw things that were inappropriate. It got flagged and went to assistant administrator. I, I always thought A S D should have adopted it, um, because other, my cohorts were wildly enthusiastic about it. Um, just because it looked like more work and, and no one was gonna pay up a lot for all that, but. We're a large district with a lot of different kids and a lot of different employees, um. I would have trouble sleeping at night. If I didn't have a system like that, place a superintendent, then I have trouble sleeping at night anyways, that may just be me. But, um, I, I think down the road, we need to look at it, and part of it is. Training our students in what it means to have a work account or an account that, that is theirs, but not owned by them. That another organization owns and has rules about, um. The beautiful thing is, we caught a lot of kids in bad behavior, but their intended targets never, never felt the punch, so to speak. Um, it would get diverted to a folder where I agree all of it. When you're sitting down with a kid that's misbehaved, but hasn't actually done any harm. They have a lot of leverage to correct the situation without it being punitive, um. And that probably was more of the workload than just running the system, than issuing the system, um, it did turn up a lot of discipline issues. But the dis- discipline issues felt a lot more like corrective action rather than having to teach about somebody and got hurt, um. I know there's not a lot of extra money playing around behind the system like that, and on our scale, it wouldn't be free, it would take personnel time. Um, and you'd have to train a big chunk of staff into overseeing and whatnot, but I. I thought it was good then, I think it's still good now, there was speculation fifteen years ago that email might be on its way out. That's certainly the case, but. My comment, I'm here.
Just wanna note that Doran Wilson's on, Ms. Ms. Wilson is online now.
Oh, okay, um, Doran Wilson has joined us. In the meeting. And there are no other comments moving on to item four, board policy six one one five, ceremonies and circuits, Mr. Don, one.
I guess we were gonna get a report from the, uh, the nation.
So, a few months ago, during governance, we were asked, and Dan, if you wanna come on up. Um, we were asked to go and, and look into, um, each of these four, um, proposed resolutions. And what was actually being done in the schools and get, do some data gathering. And Diane Carroll's here, she's, of course, in the new role that works, um, on the. In assessment valuation, which she, one of her last projects was doing this through T N L and her social studies coordinator position. Um, so if you look through each of these, um, after the actual revolution, there's some information where instruction on the, like, on the. The first page, whereas instruction on the national anthem currently exists in A S D curriculum and practices and, and it lines out where. Where that one exists, if you go on to the second and third and fourth, it, we have those also down to even like where the standards are. Um, and Alaska content standards for government and civics. Um, and, and, and stuff, and one about preamble, and I don't know how far you want me to go in, or if you want to end to go into each of these specifically. Or this is a time for you to take this information, look at it over and then bring it back, or I, I guess, and you didn't know kind of what you would like us to do. Um, towards the back of the packet, um, there is some information about. What the other four bigger school districts have in their board policy, which is not much, um. In regard to like the national anthem and what have you, and then in the very back, two sets of, uh. Things, the Constitution Day activities, so she gathered a bunch of things that the schools were doing, um. Yeah, and Constitution Day as well as Veterans Day activities, um, for this school year, um. So. Diane's here, she can answer any questions that you'd have, or if you'd like us to go into more detail about each specific one, or in order, or how you would like us to proceed with that.
Um, I think probably as we take up each proposal, um, but I'll flip it for number, um, he's got preference.
That'd be fine, okay.
So if we look first at six one one five, um. It's in the, the change in policy is highlighted on our copies, um, in the end words in all schools, the United States of America's national anthem. Shall be played at the beginning of any regular school day held on Veterans Day, September eleventh, and December seventh. And open the floor for discussion. I'll speak to my usual objection, uh, I have a lot of hesitancy about. Being specific about anything, um. I'm, I'm on board with the idea that, that students should hear the national anthem on these days. I wouldn't wanna stipulate it be at the beginning of the regular school day, um. That, that we specify that it happens. I mean, I figure in some schools that have an assembly or have some sort of ceremony where it's gonna be played. Um. And if that's third hour or the end of the day, if I need to start the day that way, then do it again. Um, I would rather say that it be at an appropriate time, um. When the, the most students will hear it. Um, and part of that also goes to the fact, I, we have a lot of different schedules, and, uh, again, at some schools. There will be a period during the day, not necessarily first hour, it's longer than the others, specifically for announcements or activities like this. Um. At least in some schools, so like third hour is ten minutes longer. Um, and that's where it all happens, uh, with the idea that you still maintain a balance and instructional time, uh, with all the other classes. So that's, that's my very objection, is that we do try to stay at a policy level. Say, these are things you should do, but try not to stipulate specifics so much that. Some of our schools are caught wondering about adhering to policy pervading, um. Or not, I don't know.
If we change the words at the beginning to just replace them with during, any regular school day, with that address your concern.
Your way.
Excellent.
So. So, I'm gonna take that as you now, since. Other discussion?
Just.
See, no, no, put it to a vote between us, uh, on the amended version of the change of board policy six one one five. The vote, yay? Yes, yeah, um, this is passed to the board for their consideration with, uh, a recommendation from the committee. Um, proposed resolution two, six one one five. And. Does, um, Doran have it in front of her, or should I read this?
I have it, um, I have it, and, and it's attached.
Mr. Chairman.
I can see it, thank you.
The first line, it's the first sentence there, but it's just that second sentence.
We won't delete the first sentence of the change.
So, need to read it or, or the paper on Mike?
Um, she's saying that, so, um. But if you wanna speak.
Um, there are several really important federal holidays that, that happen not during the school year. One of those is the Declaration of Independence, uh, the Fourth of July, and the other is June nineteenth, which is now celebrated as Juneteenth. And this would just say that at some time during the day, um, at the end of the year, the first two sentences, um. The school year, the first two sentences in Declaration of Independence preamble would be read, you know, as the. To the school, and that the first two sentences, the emancipation proclamation, be back to the school. Give it to me, think about it for something.
Um, let's say again, the only concern I have is when it does say shall be read on the public address system, um. And off the top of my head, I'm not thinking, like, where do we word it, alternative? But again, just the, for some schools, it's an outdoor activity day, uh.
I don't know, how about if we added after, over the public address system or other appropriate, um, meeting or event?
Or other appropriate presentation?
Can you, could you repeat that additional answer?
Um, or other appropriate presentation?
Presentation. Thank you.
If you take out the, uh, replacement, they had. At district schools. That is. So we, after. We'd read that, uh, the two sentences shall be read, look at the rest of some other appropriate presentation at district schools.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, instead of, of district schools.
Oh, yeah. Any other discussion?
I, I, I don't know if I should, so I, I have, I'm worried this isn't something that we're gonna be able to. Pull off at most of our schools, on the last day of school, last day of school does have a lot of celebrations, a lot of field days, a lot of things, and when you're talking about this kind of stuff, it's. And at, at high schools, it is finals days, the last day of schools too as well, and. At, you know, we go through and do something like the preamble, emancipation proclamation, you should have. At, you know, we go through and do something like the preamble, emancipation proclamation, you should have that, that should be at a time when you're actually teaching. So you can talk through what the significance of it and those specific dates are, and I don't believe on the last day of school, we could actually swing that and have it be something meaningful to kids on the last day. So I guess I I wanted to bring that up just because I just know what the schools are like in that state.
Remember, how about during the last?
You know, as long as there's, even though, you know, I would be, I would even say last month day because the last week is final week for high school. Um, but I mean, it gives, it would give teachers the ability to actually do a lesson about that.
About Mr. Chair, if I meant to change the language. You know, instead of, you know, instead of staying on the last day. The school year would be during the last month of the school year.
And Diane just brought up something too, I want her to present it so.
I just wanted to share that on the bottom of of the amendment and information. I went ahead and listed all of the times and places where these two particular. Documents are covered in our content area with students where they do have the opportunity to go into detail. The contents of that and have those discussions so that makes it more meaningful. You know, when you're talking about a class full of six-year-olds. At the end of the school year, sitting down and maybe listening to something like this is different than, you know, sitting in a class with seniors who have had some. Some instruction and content. And background information, so I just wanted to make clear that we do cover all of these things throughout the school year at the different grade levels.
Any other discussion? Any comments from online? Um, seeing none, but the amended puzzle to vote. Um, getting my first chance.
Yes.
Yes.
During the last month.
This um, we'll go to the board for their consideration.
I'm sorry, can I just, and we are changing during the last month? Would that change as well?
Right, um, correct me if I'm wrong, and he does the first sentence is highlighted, this is what we did.
Yes.
Being part. Um, the words on the last day are replaced with during the last month. Uh, the word of is replaced with the word at and the words or other appropriate presentation is added at the very end. Register those resolutions three.
So under federal law, to give federal funds, the district is required to have recognition of Constitution Day. Right now, it's different all over the district, there's things that happen, but there's no pattern, there's no requirements. As the report here indicates, lots of different things going on. I remember when I was in school, we had memorized the preamble of the Constitution. And it seemed like very appropriate on Constitution Day, we had at least one thing all the schools did the same. And to simply read the preamble of the Constitution, it's very short, actually. Very meaningful. So if the concern is that that's difficult to deal with in the morning, I would. Propose that it be during the day, until the beginning of the day. Sometimes the system in the school, district schools during the day.
Anything at the beginning? Uh, to during. And I would propose adding after over the public address system. Or at a school-wide presentation. Doesn't make.
Second.
Question here is a picture.
Oh, member Wilson.
Yeah, this is maybe, as we make these, as the government's committee makes these recommendations. It seems that it could be helpful for the committee to also ask the administration, if this is forward, ask the administration to develop some. introductory talking points that are grade levels, I mean, division specific, so that. I'm principal so-and-so, good morning, today's hot lunch is this. Here's the preamble of the Constitution. I feel like there should be. A couple of talking points that might be helpful for the principals, should each of these things changes take place. That's not something having to do with policy, but it just seems like a practical assist to facilitate the transition of reading. Some relatively heavy documents that some children may have never had an introduction to before.
I would think that would come back in administrative regulations.
Or just things that go out to the principals.
America, did you have?
Just to note that member Jacobs is online as well.
Ah, okay.
And I agree with that, I just, but it might be very different from school to school, though, how the principal would address.
Sure.
Get introduced to.
Sure, and I don't think I'm envisioning mandatory talk, I'm just envisioning some. Questions.
Yeah. I I wouldn't suppose that every principal. You know, they're educators.
Right, they're educators.
It's a former teacher, I'll take it. We don't wanna fight that one.
Uh, any other discussion? Um. So again, I'm gonna say. We change of to add district schools. Uh, over the public address system. Or at a presentation. That sounds like.
At the.
School-wide, school-wide presentation.
At a school-wide presentation.
During the day.
Yeah, and the day is still still part of.
Oh, uh. Member Jacobs would like to speak.
Okay. Oh. I'm I'm reading.
I guess because this Constitution Day. Might be slightly dependent to say on Constitution Day, so probably need, oh.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
They used to have a lot of those.
Yeah. Um, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I apologize for being late today, I. In reviewing the agenda, there's a number of attachments on this particular item, and I see us looking at one. Can I under better understand the framing of what we're discussing? Are we going through these items one by one? And then I also am going off of memory that administration was going to follow up with us. Um, after doing some research and stakeholder engagement regarding this board policy and ceremonies and observances. And I I guess my other question is if that. Um, information is also attached to this agenda item. And why this is being discussed again?
Um, yeah, also we'll do a discussion from the administration, I think just before you came on the line. Uh, we are going through them one by one, right now, we're on proposed resolution number three. And um. The comments by the administration is that principle to member takes that that's cool. The um. Page that's got the the links highlighted in blue. Is from the administration that's done some research about what we're doing in our schools and what's being done. Uh, in other schools, in other locations, and that those comments are item by item as well.
And then the Constitution, what's happening in our schools like this last is one of the last pages, there's like three pages of stuff. There are a number of Constitution Day activities that that happened.
Okay, Mr. Chair, can I just a quick follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the context. I don't remember receiving an email with this agenda item and these attachments. A question for administration, when or potentially Ms. Sullivan, when were these attachments uploaded to board docs?
When were they, I'm sorry, member Jacobs, you're asking when they were uploaded?
Yes, to board docs.
Uh, they were uploaded yesterday, the these, the original proposed. Changes were there for quite some time, but the additional administration work was attached yesterday, yesterday.
Understood, okay, uh, Mr. Chair, can I just a quick follow comment now?
Yes, member Jacobs.
Yeah, appreciate it, um, I'm happy to to go over these one by one and discuss, I personally would appreciate. A bit more time to review these before taking any action. Um, just based on the fact that these, at least all the comments haven't been uploaded for more than twenty-four hours. But I do appreciate the work from the administration and this topic, and I'm glad we're continuing to discuss it forward. So that's that's my perspective for now, thank you.
Other comments? Given the comments of member Jacobs, I will leave it to your discretion as to whether I'm gonna make a vote to the table. Um, otherwise, I will put proposed resolution three to a vote as amended.
Yeah. Well, so Mr. Chair, can I respond to your your request really quick before we?
Member Jacobs, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um, so I I defer to the committee, perhaps, the other two members have had time to digest that information over the last twenty-four hours. My recollection was this committee committed to providing information seventy-two hours in advance, which is kind of our standard recommendation for general board meetings. I haven't had time to adequately go over administration's feedback, and so if we were to to vote at this point, I would ask to abstain. I don't wanna cast a vote without having done my due diligence on these proposals, so I would ask that after going over these documents and asking, having dialogue and questions that we table this for the next meeting. However, if the other two members would like to vote, that's certainly your purview.
And number lessons, did you still have a comment?
It was maybe a question for the administration, um, I appreciate the information for when students get exposed to some of these things, the Constitution at, for example. I thought, so like on the back of resolution three, page two, it looks like social studies K two, when unit? I thought when what like when is what I need? Like, how is that a social studies unit, or am I completely into things? I thought, I guess I thought that when was really for like reading skills. And looking at just like the top.
So I'm I'm. When you go into the the document, the digital document, you'll be able to make to the specific lesson plan or activity.
Yeah.
Um, that's on there, and so they, um, it appears as though that they're using. The content to teach the skills, so they're talking about, because it's also part of social studies.
Right, but I just thinking of.
At those ages.
When is often disaggregated by ability level, right? So certain kids are learning these skills, certain kids are learning these skills, and I guess I just. Hadn't thought that, especially in K two, students are reading the preamble of the Constitution when they're focusing on cats.
That's a great question, I am a.
Yeah, I really, yeah.
And and I know that when has been taken over by, um, specifically, language arts and math for their M P S S. Process, and so I don't have a specific answer for that.
I just, the Constitution is really different than community community awareness. So maybe we can, I can have a follow-up conversation with somebody else.
So it's a great question.
There are a lot of ways to go in.
Remember Jacobs, my head's hand up again.
Okay, uh, member Jacobs, then Mr. Race.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I actually, I don't think I ever got my hand taken down, but, um, yeah, appreciate the conversation, continuing to listen.
Just to speak to that a little bit, how I, uh, my understanding, talking with educators, some win groups higher level. Uh, readers, because there is basically a ability grouping, uh, have a little bit more. Ability to incorporate some of that, I can't speak to the preamble being a K two lesson, you know, a reading lesson, but maybe, maybe there are some second ones that I can handle that. It does seem like that would be pretty complicated, like which, uh, just, just in that concept of win. Higher level, I think have a little bit more latitude to do other.
Right, I guess, I guess, and I'm thinking about what I may know about K, you know, our students' ability at K two, at reading proficiency. That's a small slice of the student population, which means that, um, really, social studies isn't being introduced until fifth grade, which is the end of elementary school, so. Um. I guess that gets back to my earlier comment about maybe the administration offering some help for principals to introduce. Content. That. Five, six of the students in an elementary school may have never heard.
And and if you have it scaffold, you know, the the resources that are being provided are scaffolded for kindergarten versus the first grade or second grade, third grade, or so when you're looking at. Um, citizenship type books, you have, you have them at the reading level, so kindergarten would be more like a picture book. That talks about, um, the Constitution with portions of it, they may not necessarily be going into all of the the detail and asking students to read it. Actually themselves, but they are using it to introduce those concepts.
Kind of getting in the weave, thank you.
Any other comments? Um, I'm gonna say because my feeling is this is fairly narrow, uh, we're talking. About one day out of the year and really just a couple of minutes, depending on. Uh, how school approaches it, I mean, if they decide to simply read the preamble and then move on. We're not talking about what a big change in instructional day, and of course, individual teachers or schools may choose to do a lot more than that. Be fine under this, I'm prepared to listen to this today. Remember, Donald, do you have any other comments or?
No, thank you.
Um, that said, I will put it to a vote, uh, this is amended with the. Changes to the highlighted text, striking the word of. Um, inserting there. Vote for at a school-wide presentation, I'm sorry, substituting the word at with the word of. Um, and then striking the words at the beginning of the day and replacing the word. Um, during the day.
Now you're getting.
Or I'm sorry, yes, just striking. At the beginning of the day. Um. Go ahead and put that to a vote.
Yes.
I vote yes, member Jacobs.
Yes.
Uh, that is passed and. Moving to the board for their consideration. Moving to resolution four, member Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. The last, the last one is something that the board, not this board, but a prior board had considered in narrowly. I think it's a three to four vote, it's a, you know, two, about five years ago. But it simply say that the national anthem. Should be played at the beginning of the school day held on the first school day of every month.
The flag song, the state flag song would happen after that. And of course, individual schools may choose to begin additional school days with the National Anthem, which some already, several already are, um, with both these songs. But the real change would be that once a month, uh, schools would play the National Anthem at the beginning of the day, the state flag song.
Questions, comments? Yeah, I have my usual concerns about stipulating it again in the school day. That's one of my, my own major concerns. Um, it would just be during, proposed subject.
Move to delete at the beginning of, place it with the word during, sentences, the first two sentences. So they would mean, in all schools, United States National Anthem shall be played during the school day. And delete, hold, during the school day on the first, you know, I think we could deal away with the entire, okay, so. What was it made? In all schools, United States of America's National Anthem shall be played during the first school day of every so that deletes the text at the beginning of the school day held on. And have the same language adopted from the second paragraphs, second sentence. So the final version would be, in all schools, United States of America's National Anthem shall be played during the first school day of every month.
Again, any questions, comments?
Oh, so.
I have, I have a few, I have a couple of things on this one. Up at the top, word and was underlined, um, as something adding to this. What that says then is the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem will be done on that day. Usually, you do one or the other, you don't do both. I'm wondering if that's the case there, and then as you go down further into the body of the actual, um, board policy, it's, it says the district expressly grant, and it will not curtail and exclude the flag or personal reasons. So, does that also include the National Anthem? Um, so, just making sure that if those two are put in there, along with the National, the National Anthem and the last flag song, does the rest of the verbiage of this board policy match? Or does there need to be something changed there also? You know what I mean?
Hmm. Mr. Chair. Uh, this member Donald. The real significant distinction is the pledge requires somebody to permanently say something. Or just listening to some music played doesn't require that. So, I, I guess the impossible issue would be whether or not they stand during the National Anthem.
Yeah, but then, and then it is to the slip to the flag, so I, and I, I just wanted us to make sure we looked at.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that would be an important AR down the road, um, just so the principals have clear guidance on it, uh. My experience is that the vast majority of classroom teachers absolutely respect the fact or assume to respectfully decline to participate in any of this. Uh, but, but not, never heard of an instance where a student was compelled, that would mean that they have something.
I guess the big, the one up on the top, the and, are we doing and or, can be neither or, I guess who I reads is, shall be said, and figure, and then it says, go, the next sentence is about the National Anthem.
Well, it doesn't, the and doesn't require, it says, shall be conducted on a regular basis as determined by the school board, so it doesn't mandate anything unless it's listed by the school specifically. These are listed as.
Right, right, yeah.
I, I read the first paragraph, this kind of referring to things through the school year, that, that we're gonna do both of these. We're gonna do the pledge and we're going to do patriotic exercises, but, um, on, on a regular basis, but, but that could be every month or every quarter or, um, if we had students see the colored guard on a regular basis, and the National Anthem, I mean, this, this thing's just happened, of course, of the school year anyway. So I think it would, I think it's actually more true to what we do to say in the, or. Other comments, questions?
Um.
Member lessons.
Yeah, just with these two. I'm sorry, I was, you've already addressed this, I was thinking, you know, so at the beginning, you've changed, you've changed that, the beginning to the different. Okay, I'm sorry.
And add it first, uh, before, before the school day. So this, this is a once-a-month event here. Seeing here, no other questions, signal hands, put it to a vote, member Donald. Number Jacobs.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so this is passed. Take that to the board for their consideration.
Thank the committee for its time, appreciate it.
And I did want to be clear, the, uh, this is labeled P P six-one-one-five ceremonies and services, this is just information for the committee, it's not a proposal, we're not doing that policy.
Or the additional information that's attached.
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just examples of things that can be done. Um, moving to agenda item five, final review of board policy, O O O, concepts and roles, goals for the school district objectives, running, um, I'm not sure.
These are, uh, policies that were reviewed some time ago, that, um, uh, did pass from the committee, but there was, uh, a step missed, it did not make it to the board for vote, first and second reading and a vote. Um, so I just, because it's been a little bit, wanted to make sure that the committee, um, just approved sending them forward to the full board.
Done, sir. Uh.
And I believe, Kelly, that you, these were revisions that you had brought forward, and then the committee did review them and agree them.
Did you have a better memory than I do?
I listened to the tape.
Okay. Great.
So you're just asking us to refresh what we previously did?
Just, yeah, just, it's, it's been a little bit, so instead of just putting it on the agenda, um, I thought it should have one last look before it goes through.
Any discussion or questions, member lessons, would you like to speak to?
I, yeah, I, I have a vague recollection that we talked about this during the meeting.
You were, you were, no, it was at a governance committee, and it was just changing the language so that it reflected the board's, uh, direction within the goals and the guardrails.
Okay, great, thank you for that refresher, um, that was, must have been a lifetime ago, um. I'm looking at, um, zero to ten, and it may be helpful to hold off on bringing them forward only to look at them side-by-side to a portrait of a graduate, I think that we need to figure out what the point of the portrait of a graduate is in relation to this board policy. Um, there's a lot in the portrait of a graduate that clearly is supported by community members and stakeholders, and I guess I would just want to see that they align.
Are you asking this to be tabled?
So I think that would be, I am, I am not a member of your governance committee.
But you can ask.
I would, I would ask the committee to consider tabling this, uh, for, um, confirm that there is alignment with the portrait of a graduate, which.
Could we also ask the administration to review the two things, and see if they have any suggestions for making it compatible?
I would defer to the committee member to ask that question.
Mr. Race.
I, I just wanted to, procedurally, the board is set to vote on the portrait of a graduate the next board meeting, so maybe we're to delay. We may attempt to adopt it the portrait before we review this again.
I think that we could probably go ahead and adopt the portrait.
Okay.
And then, I think, procedurally, see if zero to ten needs to be
tweaked.
Tweak, so as to align with the portrait.
Okay, great.
The, the one ring to rule them all, yeah.
I love it.
Yes, um, I would move that we table this until the next governance committee.
I vote yes.
That's a second of the yes, and I vote yes. Member Jacobs, it doesn't really matter what you do, but if you like to vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that is tabled, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and next meeting dates are waiting there, anyone have anything to do with the order? Seeing none, it's like perfectly timed meeting. We are on adjournment, that was.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and I, and it's funny because America and I, like, we, we have the red line version, but what I, yeah, it, it must accept those changes, so would that help to see the?
The red line changes?
I, or, yeah, I mean, I'd be curious to go back to your records, I mean, this is it's just a lot that comes through.
Yeah.
Collectors more buffet.
And so much going on that, you know, and it just wasn't caught, that it didn't get.
But, but maybe, maybe there's some serendipity, and, uh, we should just sort of have it so nicely wrapped. Oh, welcome. Hey, you're speaking, we're just transitioning from one committee to the next.
Having transitioned over, and then I'm going to use this for you, just in case.
So you, you get a copy of one.
Are we starting by, now, zoom for this one? Thank you.
She went through.
For how we're doing it?
She went through, she's.